Good evening. My name is Randy Aloy. I live in 9420 Withem Lane. This is like a personal concern. It was a Saturday morning. I'm a physical therapist by profession. I work 10 hours every day. There's a research been done that if you're a medical professional, you should be able to sleep at least eight hours on a regular basis just to be able to provide good care for your patient. Early morning Saturdays, 7 o'clock in the morning, those, I don't want to, they call it bulldozer dump trucks, like plowing that side behind my house and really noisy. It really makes me awake. It's really frustrating to have those kind of noises. I listen to a lot of hard rock music. There's nothing more than truck driving in beside your house 3 o'clock in the morning. If you have time, you can go there. I have been living in that place for almost, since 2007. Every 3-4 o'clock in the morning, I can hear those dump 18-wheeler trucks like running dong-dong-dong-dong. And it's really noisy. Now, if we're going to put some warehouse there, that regardless of how much decibel they were discussing in here, that's going to be really a lot of noise. And one, my other concern, I was about to with you saying that those trees are in poor condition. Like I said, I've been living there since 2007. I have observed those trees change colors every change of season. I've seen some fox animals while there for more than like 10-15 occasions in there. For me, that justified that those trees are not in poor condition. And, you know, I liked the area before I bought my house because you have good, nice view on the back of my house and to put warehouses, which they said they're going to put a lot of trees, and drivers are driving there, we're not going to be able to see those buildings. I just don't think that it's accurate. If you're living in that village, you definitely see those warehouses. And it's, you know, like a stone in the eye. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Golis. I live at 9131 South Somerset Lane with my parents and my family. My mother already spoke. My biggest question is, where are the EPA studies? Where are the sound studies? Where are the tree studies so that the village residents can view these tests that were done? Can anyone answer that? You said there was a sound study that was conducted. Where can we view that?
No, I did not say that there was a sound study from us. The developer did have a consultant evaluate the impact and the benefit of businesses as they would be developed and how they would offer sound from the pollings. Certainly, they'd be willing to provide that to you.
Okay.
As to all the other studies, we have them in the developed department. We're happy to provide them to anybody who makes an inquiry.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, the second from the background.
Hi. My name is Laurie Scrazina. I live at 1841 Withem Lane. It was just a short time ago that our bedroom window, I back up to Frontage Road, and we can see Frontage Road very well, as well as Woodward. And I looked at my husband and I said, "I know you hate the noise in this house." I said, "But if you look out this bedroom window, it's quite beautiful. The trees, the couple houses next to us, the landscaping, it was beautiful." And a few days later, I came back into town and it was all gone. I know whatever your map shows on here, it looks like there's actually going to be a little bit distance from the Frontage Road to where the entrance to where the trucks are going to be coming out of. I want you to go and look at that because I actually can stand on my deck in my backyard. You can't have company because it's way too noisy. But I stand out there and I do wave to my grandson as his school bus comes over the I-55 expressway. And he can see me from that school bus. I can walk in a matter of seconds from my house to that corner, okay, at Woodward. There is no space where that road could be any distance because as soon as you get to that corner, you start walking up and you're walking over the expressway. My view will now be nothing but trucks coming back and forth because, like I said, I'm right at that Frontage Road. You're talking about 400 trucks going in and out of there. I know they're going to turn right and they're going to go over the expressway. But once again, there's no distance from where Frontage Road is to where this road could be starting for these trucks. So, once again, if you would just look at this map and really see how this is, but for anybody that has a house along that Frontage Road, unless you're going to put up a whole bunch of trees for us or something, and there is space if you want to do that, but I'm telling you, it's really not going to be nice because you can't go in your yard now and you're certainly not going to be able to go into your yard once these trucks are running 24/7 in and out of there. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Marsaglio, 1660 Chaucer Lane. I know you went over the revenues and projections, but what are the additional costs to the city for this project and the additional costs over the next 25 years? What study was done on that? I'm sure our officers here are going to be taxed a little bit harder. Police Department, Fire Department's going to be taxed harder. Anything done there? That's the first question. I'll just let you answer him as I go along.
As part of the developer proposal, the developers required to submit a tax, school, and impact analysis. And this looks at not only the proposed revenues and at the development, and referring to the entire EDAV development provided, but also looks at real potential costs so that you could evaluate the net benefits in terms of tax dollars to the village and the other taxing bodies. For the village specifically, and this is excluding Edward Don because of, and the incentives that are provided for there, the annual revenue initially to the village would be about $416,000 a year. The annual cost, about $177,000 for a net benefit of $214,000 to the village. To the other taxing bodies, based on full buildup of the proposed business and the 88ers, the benefit annually would be 1.1 million dollars.
Okay. In regards to your sound study, it seems just to be a little bit inaccurate that was done by whoever it is over here. Most of those trucks aren't going to be going 40 miles an hour down that road. They're going to be starting and stopping, which creates a lot more noise than just a truck going at 40 miles an hour. Are you going to do a study in regards to that, to the real-life scenario rather than a make-believe scenario?
There's been no further study done. That's the analysis.
So you're ready to go ahead with the project without having full data in that regards?
We have a decision by the village board as to whether additional needed assistance is required.
Okay. And lastly, just so other people can speak, it's a huge difference between an office complex and a warehouse complex. We already have an office complex off of Frontage and Lamont Road, which doesn't seem to cause that many problems. But a warehouse complex can obviously cause a lot more problems. And I don't know if you can put restrictions on in regards to that, but I think one of the other presidents said, you know, maybe biohazards they might be doing there. There's a lot of different things a warehouse can do. And just because Edward Don's going in there today doesn't mean they can go out of business in two years and somebody else can come in. So please take that into consideration.
All hazardous materials, MSDS, is required by our ordinance and by the agency to be shared with all public safety. And that's with ourselves as the village of Woodridge, who are our emergency management agency for the community, and as well as the fire district, the area of Woodridge Fire District. When we see something that is unusual, almost all, everybody has some hazardous materials involved, bleach, those things that you put under my sink because they're right behind. But once we see something that's unusual, we will work with those groups and we will develop specific responses for those. I was just trying to think as we were talking, there's only one or two facilities down in that park that have anything that's unusual that would concern us. And that's nowhere near where this is being built.
Good evening. My name's Weston Olcheck, 9135 South Somerset Lane, Woodridge, Illinois. I'm up here to kind of state the obvious. We got a lot of people that came up here and voiced being against this, but I've yet to hear one person come up here and say that, "Why, let's go ahead with this project." And after just hearing the last numbers, it's even more disturbing. You're going to build this large complex in the backyard of some of the largest residential homes in Woodridge for what? $200,000. $200,000 of increased revenue for this village. And the question is, we got a whole group of residents here that are against this, that have moved to Woodridge to raise their family, to make a better home for themselves. And we elect people like yourselves to hopefully look out for us. But it looks like tonight, instead of looking out for the residents here in Woodridge, we're looking out for three groups of individuals. We're looking out for McShane, we're looking out for Gallagher and Henry, and we're looking out for Edward Don. Edward Don's going to make an increased amount of revenue due to the tax break, which is great for them on pro-business, but it shouldn't have to come at the cost of $200,000 to the village of Woodridge. It should be a larger number in order to achieve this type of increase of revenue, in order to build this type of project here in the village of Woodridge. And it's upsetting. It really is. Because unfortunately, I've had other dealings here with the village, and there's one reason why this project is going through. It's because the landowner is who they are, and they've done so much business here in the village, and it's going to go through. And it's very disheartening. And I hope everybody here in this board looks deep and asks themselves, "Hey, if I lived in this subdivision, if I lived near this project, would I want this in my backyard?" Because I know I don't. We got a group here of individuals who don't want it in their backyard. And I hope you guys all think really hard. If you guys already made up your mind, that's great. But before you do vote tonight, I hope you look a little bit harder, look deep, and think to yourself, "Hey, would I want this in my backyard? Is this $200,000 worth everything that Woodridge is going to get for our residents? Or should I be looking out for the residents of Woodridge and not just big business and the largest landholder?" Thank you.
My name is Perry Patel, and I live in 9220 Bedford Drive, Woodridge. Most of my concern has been addressed with previous friends and families. But a couple of things I would like to address is, one thing is, speaking from my own experience, is I drive every day to the International Parkway. And I see every other day, the truck driver, either they can't make a left turn right to the warehouse or whatever the building it is. They take almost 10-15 minutes just to make the turn. So I have to literally wait for five to 10 minutes every day to cross that International Parkway. So the traffic is going to be definitely a big concern for all the people who live there and commute there. The second thing is, we also mentioned about 4,000 trips every day, last trip, if you do the warehouse versus office versus only office. But these trips, we talk about only during the daytime. Here, I think this is a warehouse. So basically, the truck and traffic is going to be all day. And I think, and like everybody mentioned, the noise is going to be very, very disturbing. So basically, at least people, they work every day and they at least expect a good sleep, right? So if you have a truck going down every day, especially in the nighttime, that's probably not going to be good for anybody. And third thing is, everybody worked really hard for their house, right? This is the biggest investment. So, I mean, right now, economy is bad. Therefore, 1K is probably very down. A lot of people lives in the Woodridge house. They are all senior citizens, right? So this is the only thing they have right now because of the economy. They probably don't have a job and they're barely making their, you know, trying to pay their bills and, you know, pay all the, whatever the dues they have. So if the property value goes down, then they have nothing to hold on to. So please keep all these things in your mind when you vote. And another thing which I also repeat is, just think, would you like to have a warehouse in your backyard before you vote? I mean, if the answer is yes, I mean, you can vote whatever the way you want to. But I think that, I think, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Hi. Rich Guz here, 9220 Withem, Woodridge. I had a couple of concerns with the building because the land slopes south to north. I see on the drawings, the buildings are roughly 37 feet tall. Do we know exactly how tall they are? And is that land being sloped or is it being flattened?
I would recommend that you have Shane's consultant describe the height of the buildings relative to Woodward Avenue, where exhibits that show that.
Brett Duffy, Spaceco, 9575 West Higgins Road, Rosemont. The property is being, will be masqueraded to, it does slope from south to north and then from, partially from west to east. It will be leveled to put the building pad in. The building will be, the finished floor will be roughly about 10 feet above Woodward Avenue and another 35 feet high to the top of the building.
In the drawings, if we are looking at 37-foot building, the trees are half the size of the building. Is there any plans for that, to put something there that would be bigger or could grow taller? And how long would that take? The, something I had for the Edward Don Company is, how many shifts does the Edward Don Company have? I work for a family-owned business. We only have one shift. But I'm wondering how many different shifts and what time of the day do they start so I know what time traffic's going to be heavier at? We also heard that you're going to have box trucks, or I'm sorry, 24-foot trucks. Are they box trucks, flatbeds, tandems? Family-owned business, we have over 150 trucks with all different types of size engines and things. And I know someone already talked about first gear and second gear. If anyone has a stick shift to get in and out of first gear, you've got to rev that thing up to 6,000 RPMs or higher. It's going to be a lot louder. And if it's only 300 feet away from that one corner, those houses are going to get the brunt of that noise. I know there's no studies, but please keep that into consideration. Where the trucks come out, where you're proposing the south end of the land, if that is roughly higher than the houses, all those semi-trucks are going to be pretty much eye level at the houses for our second floors. So they have to consider that those lights from those semis turning right all day, all night long will be shining into those houses on the corner and down the Frontage Road. Did you look at how much closer that stop sign or the new south entrance is from the bridge? You take a 52-foot semi-stop on Woodridge heading north. How much time does a, do the kids out of the movie theater have time when they come over that bridge? I know the roads were planned there much later, that the streets are much further down, but this new stop sign or new entrance is going to be much closer to the top of that bridge. I didn't know if that was a concern. Would the village propose a tax credit if this goes through? And we are complaining about noise. To seek other options of saying, "We'll give a tax credit to sound-detening windows, different types of drywall and building products." That'd be something to look at to at least help us out with the sound. I do have to say, I do not like the noise. I hope it does not happen. I can hear the noise at night. And I have hearing aids and I have 40% loss hearing in both ears. And I can hear the semis without them in my house. I just hope you don't do it. Thanks.
Michael, if I miss anything, please keep me on task. The number of vehicles that we have that are the Edward Don vehicles with the Don logos, they're 24-foot straight trucks, single axle. They have automatic transmissions. They're not stick shift. So that's a much smoother and lower, you know, means of starting and stopping. We operate the building three shifts a day, which was, we had talked about that last week. And the, the-
I'm sorry, sorry. Did you say three shifts a day?
Three shifts. We do operate three shifts. And that's Monday through Friday. We end Friday evening around 6:00 PM, and then we start Sunday evening around 7:00 PM. And so we're typically shut down. Only in emergency situations do we work if there's weather-related things on a Saturday typically. Michael, I miss anything else?
No, I think that's good. And I think to address the elevation, the consideration of materials and colors that were put into that elevation, and we referred to Shane and that consultant to describe that, and maximum height of potential trees that would be part of the proposed landscape.
I think I actually might ask John Ryan from Ives Ryan, our landscape architect, to come up and talk about how tall the trees will be when we first plant them and what their maximum height will be to maybe give a better understanding.
John Ryan Ives Ryan Group, 324 Eisenhower Lane, Lombard. One of the reasons for setting the building back considerably further than 30 feet, actually 139 feet, is to give us the ability to install waves of trees as opposed to just a single row. We have existing trees as our first wave, which are the existing Parkway trees, which are currently in the area of four to six-inch caliper, four to eight-inch caliper, many of which are 25 or so feet tall as we speak. Immediately starting on our property, we are creating a series of berms with large groups of evergreen trees, which at the time they were planted would be anywhere from eight to 14 feet tall and then add two to three feet to each one of those heights for the berm that they're sitting on. Additionally, since there will be views under trees, we're creating large colonies of, we call ornamental trees, which will fill in the gaps when you look below trees. These are planted all along Woodward in between the evergreen trees. Immediately behind them are more deciduous trees, which we have upsized from the existing, from the required two and a half inch to three to four inch. So at the time of planting, they will be in the area of 18 to 20 feet tall. And then up against the building itself, on the other side of the detention pond, we have additional large groups of trees, which are ornamental-type trees, which we're basically planting in groups of eight to 10, with three trunks per tree. So you have at least 20 trunks in a group. And those trees are being planted in the area of 10 to 16 feet tall. So the idea is to have wave after wave after wave of trees, as well as shrubs, filling in the gap below the trees. And you can expect, once the trees are established, after the first year, probably each tree will gain initial foot per year during the worst of times and hopefully more if, you know, the weather cooperates.
My name is Jen J. Zach, and I live at 1231 South Somerset. I moved into the subdivision about five years ago. We built the home ourselves, planned on raising a family there. I have a one and a three-year-old, so I'm up here as a parent, like many of the other people are. You've heard all this already. The noise in our yards obviously is awful. I'm not going to keep going on that. Other things I'm concerned with, we have a lot of issues in my backyard. I'm assuming a lot of people. I live along the retention pond. When I moved in, we were told that something would be done with that retention pond in terms of aeration and things like that. It is a mosquito cesspool. They come around and spray, you know, once every couple of weeks or if you call and complain, but it's awful. Nothing's been done with that. There is a wildlife area, not wildlife, excuse me, natural life area between my home and the retention pond. They took down sod of everyone that put it in after two years of waiting and put up their plan that they went ahead with. It has not been maintained. It has since ruined my lawn. I just paid $500 to have my lawn fixed. Not to mention, you know, the sound in my backyard. I won't take my kids in my backyard. I barely take them in my front yard. All of these things, I have tried calling the village. I still am waiting for someone to call me back about my grass and dealing with that. My question is that all of these things have, I've been told are going to be done. I was told, "Oh, they're going to have to do something with the sound. They're going to do something with the pond. Oh, we'll take care of that natural grassland area for you." Nothing gets done. So how can we sit here and hear you say, "Well, the police are going to do this. The village is going to do this. All of this natural beauty is going to be around this buildings here." How can we trust that all that's going to get done when nothing has been done with our property at all? And when we have tried to initiate something getting done, we're just shot down. I know I turned in those papers. And I was one of the few, one of the people that said, "I will cut you a check right now. I don't care if my share's five grand. Here you go. Put it towards the sound wall." And then we were shot down. So how can we trust that all these things regarding this property will get done? My second issue is, I was kind of calculating on my calculator here. Should there be residences in this area? I think I figured about 200 to 240 residences on an 80-acre piece of property. If each home paid $8,000 a year, comes out to anywhere between 1.6 and 1.9 million dollars. And yet, what was that figure again that we're getting from this business in tax revenue?
Tax revenue for the village over a 30-year period would be approximately $30 million.
My 1.6 to 1.9 is per year, if you had 200 homes in that 80-acre area. Now, I'm assuming that if you have $1.9 million of tax revenue, the costs are $1.7 million to net us that $200,000 that were coming up. So again, as people were saying, isn't there a better use of this land? I'm all for business. I'm all for making it a better place to live. One of the few meetings I was at regarding the sound wall, I was, I remember a comment very vividly, I believe it was by the village attorney, where I was, everyone was told, "We didn't ask you to live here." I believe on your website, it says, "Woodridge is a good place to live." And I chose to come here and raise a family. And you know what? I can't sell my house. I paid almost a half a million dollars for it. I can't even get it refinanced because it's worth 350. One of the comments on my appraisal was noise. One of the comments was, I forgot something, about the strange growth in my backyard. And I put, you know, 20 grand into landscaping and it's ruined from that ground that's not being taken care of. So again, I'm all for it if it's a good thing, but when are you going to do something for us? And you know what? Someone mentioned putting trees along Frontage. Take some of those hundreds of, I forgot what the guy is, take some of those hundreds of trees and please plant them along Frontage then. With all this increase, do something to show us that you care and you're going to do something for that area. Half a million dollar homes and we can't get anything. Can't even barely get, I'm surprised we're getting heard today. And I appreciate it. So thank you.
If you'd like to proceed to questions, someone asked.
Yeah. Actually, I was the attorney who was here. And you're kind of misquoting what I said. What, it came up in the context of the village had an obligation to tell us what was going to be built. And I indicated the village had no idea who was buying those properties. Were not involved in the transaction. And the comment was, "Well, you invited us to move here. That's our obligation." And speaking from a legal point, I was mentioning, no, the village did not invite you to create an obligation on its part to track down who was purchasing homes.
When you put that on your website, nice and big.
Mr. Butler, do you have any suggestions?
No, but that leads me into a discussion. We had that done with sound walls. And certainly, Mr. Butler can sit down. Anybody wants to see what occurred and what was or not done in accordance with the procedure that was set up. I appreciate, I mean, I understand, I appreciate, I sympathize with the noise from moving back to 55 or 355. That was there. 55 was in existence. 355 was in the bill or plan at the time this property was even planted.
Is that true?
That's correct. And I did say that. But the plans certainly had been in existence and was pointed out, the floor plans that if someone had been advising you, they might have been able to point it out. The issue of zoning, again, is not something anybody wants to hear, but under Illinois law and federal law, a property owner's rights are paramount to a government's, with certain exceptions. Municipalities can impose reasonable zoning regulations. Woodridge has zoning ordinance. Back in 1989, when the property was annexed, it was already known that there could be offices across the street. And it was also noted that during the term of the annexation, there was multi-fam, I don't know how many homes that would be. There was a possibility, but that possibility would expire in 1989. That was in a document and it was in the public record. And I'm sorry that not everyone was able to determine that. But even looking at the map, it said there could be these offices. Today, would not be more. If Gallagher and Henry and the developer chose to build offices in accordance with that plan, it wouldn't be any type of hearing. They could submit plans, get permits, and build it. It was, I mean, I don't know. I'm either here to support or- Uh, it was, uh, I mean, I don't know, I'm either here to support or, or reject the Edward Don's, but, uh, only because they're here seeking some relief, although there's the explanations of how it affects the, the neighborhood. Only because of that is the village able to get additional items to help offer in the area. The, again, 55 was there, and I apologize, I mean, the highway, I mean, who would, who would trail? 55 was there, 355, and the expansion was developed, it was in the plan, uh, Woodward was always in our territory, it was intended to be, it was constructed to receive truck traffic, and the traffic studies indicated that it's not anywhere near capacity. And it is what it is, there is an argument, and I'm not an immoderated praiser, that when a praiser looked at your property for purposes of your mortgages, it took into consideration that property adjacent or across the street from you was owned for potential office or multifamily. People also argue multifamily, it reduces the value of homes, adjacent to them, if they're a nice single family. So many of these issues have existed, and, and I disagree with anyone who suggests this property was more likely to be tampered with, and the village went all out to help protect residents with your assistance to defeat that and get property cleaned up. This is an entirely different issue, it's not a contaminated property, the phase one assessment's done according to the United States Department, and it's not a contaminated property. And, uh, so they have rights to, and it's always been able to be developed upon us. So I, I think it's, um, it's not the current vacant progress obligation to, to ameliorate all these other conditions that have existed for years. And, and I know nobody appreciates hearing that, but I'd say as we understand that, or attempt to.
The only thing I have to ask is, with this new structure that's going on, I'm sure it's gonna not be one thing, another thing, another thing, it's gonna be a whole widespread sort of things that's gonna happen. Is there gonna be any, uh, taxing implications for all the house homers?
What could be the taxing implications of a property that you tax?
Well, just, uh, tax money coming off.
Tax reduction.
Reductions, yeah. Now that you have a corp, I mean, now that corporate is moving into Woodridge, would there be any, uh, reduction in taxes?
One of the village's goals over the last 25 years is to encourage diversification of taxes, to promote eventual reduction of taxes on the residential community. Um, the village itself, for 24 years, reduced its tax rate. The best way to help the other taxing bodies to do the same, because they don't have the same resources or revenue coming in, is through property tax, and, uh, everyone on their property tax base, so to Abregad, with, um, the Tax Impact Study, rejecting that all the taxing bodies would receive annually 1.1 million dollars in taxes from this development, that would help Abregad.
So basically, that would be a negatory.
Well, the village, the village has very limited ability to influence how the other taxing bodies use the dollars, so if they get new dollars, whether or not they actually reduce their taxes, their portion of the taxes, it's really up to them. What we're trying to do, um, on a regular basis, is to try to buy sufficient taxes that they can actually consider.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Frank Fletcher Brochek, I live at 3012 John Paul Lane. I am not a neighbor to this project, and I think most of you know that. I'm here because I read this interesting article this morning, in the online Patch Newspaper, about sales tax revenue and utility tax revenue rebate, so I just have a few questions, and I won't take up a lot of time here. This resolution, R67, is this just for the Edward Don Company, or are the other lots and businesses in the future covered by the language in this resolution?
Just the Edward Don.
Okay. And the, the rebates are for utility and sales taxes, just for the Edward Don Company?
Utility and sales tax agreement also would propose waiving the building permit fees.
How much water and sewer tax revenue is anticipated from the 350-person occupancy business per year? I'm sure you calculated this in order to, I'm interested in the amount of money per year, I don't know what to think about the 30-year amount, so, you, you have the number.
Well, I like the lives, the number is provided by the study for the entire park, and so what would be generated in terms of water and utility?
No, I'm only interested in right, the here and the now is the Edward Don Company, that's what the resolution's for, it's probably just a two-inch pipe going to the building, it's only 350 people, how much money are bathrooms gonna use in the sewer tax, per year from the Edward Don Company? And then, I guess you're multiplying 25% times that, that's the amount of the rebate per year?
It is based on a projection of what the development, specifically the Edward Don building, would generate a year. An estimate, utility taxes that would be generated is approximately $80,000.
Okay, all right. So the rebate is a quarter of that?
No, the, uh, the way the agreement is proposed, is that utility taxes would all be created up to $1 million. So there's a cap on utility taxes. Sales tax is different, there's a sharing agreement over 15 years. The first five years of the agreement is proposed would provide 75% of the sales tax revenue to Edward Don, 25% of the village. The next 10 years, it would be 50/50. And then there is provisions within the agreement that provide further incentives, about $900,000 to encourage Edward Don to, um, work through, or to stay at the facility through their two five-year lease extensions. So that is the, uh, the 30-year agreement that's proposed.
Okay. Does the, does the rebate and resolution cover other utility taxes other than sewer and water? ComEd, NiGas, cabled phones?
Yes.
That the village collects?
That's really $8,000.
Okay, all right, all right. And do you know how much the sales tax revenue rebate for Edward Don is annually? Say, the first year?
The first year, it's like, it's, it's...